Our side, there we go. We will call this meeting back to order where we left off. Is Wyoming State Forestry Division tab D point five, Wildland Fire Management Annual Operating Plan. We've got Mr. Jim Zimmerman here, fire warden. Good afternoon, Jim.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. What you have before you today is um, an annual operating plan by the Wyoming State Forestry Division. It's an agreement between them and the county. It's a yearly agreement they want it signed each year. There's really uh, we, we had a planning meeting prior to this, and there really were no, hardly any changes, some verbal changes and stuff, but what it basically covers is the inter, interagency cooperation between all the agencies, preparedness, operations, reimbursements, both ways, whether, you know, we need to reimburse uh, one of the other entities or they reimburse us, uh, dispatch, hierarchy, the frequencies, approvals, and of course, coverage. So basically that's what it's covering. It's an annual thing, and I'm sure that Commissioner Tomlin and Commissioner Schellenfeld, if she was here, would uh, say, we do this every year, so you guys would have seen this the last couple of years. So it's just uh, it's just something they need our signatures on. What it's going to require is the chairman's signature and my signature as the fire warden. And then they're happy, then we go on with the next year, and then that's how we cooperate with the agencies and our agencies and, and the federal and the state agencies. If you have any questions.
Any questions?
Pretty, pretty cut for, cut straight for.
I, I do have a question. It says non-aviation related resources. What if aviation is involved?
Well, that's usually BLM. In our area, that's BLM. This is the, this is the state forestry. In fact, state forestry will bring in BLM at times. Uh, they usually have the, the big checkbook and the aviation capabilities.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the Wildland Fire Management Annual Operating Plan and authorize the chairman and fire warden to sign.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Tomlin.
I would make that motion.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Tomlin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay.
And I'd like to commend our fire warden for doing such a great job of keeping up the great rapport and working as a coordinator with all the fire agencies in the county.
Thank you so much. Too kind. Thank you, Commissioners.
Appreciate it. Motion does pass four oh. Commissioner Sheenfield has stepped out for another meeting. And with that, we'll move on to the National Library Week proclamation. Do we have anyone? Yeah. Lindsey.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Lindsey Travis. I'm the Director for the Sweetwater County Library System, and I brought a bunch of my library staff here with me today. We have Breezy Sue Haley. She's in charge of our marketing and public relations. We have Sunny Hobbs. She is our Youth Services Manager at the Rock Springs Library. Constance Potts, she's our Public Services Manager at the Rock Springs Library. We have Sherry Angelovic. She is our Youth Services Manager at the White Mountain Library. And Becky Iwin, she's our Youth Services Manager at the Green River Library. I brought all of these ladies here today to kind of, everybody sees me when I come to these types of meetings, but I wanted to show off some of our staff and what they're doing. These ladies do a lot to help with the organization of the library. They're in charge of all of our programming. They help run their front desks and do everything to make sure our libraries are very inclusive. So that's kind of why I brought them here. So um, if I can take a few minutes before we do the proclamation to give you just a short update on what the libraries are up to, how we're doing. The libraries are doing really well. Um, in the overall library attendance at programs has been significantly this fiscal year. In the month of March, we had more than four thousand people attend library programs within our library system. That's almost double what we had in two thousand twenty-two, the same month. Over the course of the fiscal year, we had, we've had more than twenty-four thousand people attend programs at the libraries. So this group, they're doing a really good job getting people to come in and use our library services. Likewise, library circulation numbers have increased quite a bit over the last year. In March, we had a total of almost twenty-three items checkout, which is about three thousand more than in March of two thousand twenty-two. And overall, compared to last year, our circulation is at more than twenty thousand for this current fiscal year. Um, our meeting rooms are also a great public service, and they've been used by um, more than a thousand different groups over the course of this fiscal year. The library and the library board has also been working very hard to ensure that our library spaces are welcoming and inclusive to everyone. This year, they have recently reviewed all of our policies to ensure that library materials cover a diverse spectrum, that parents have the responsibility for what their minor children check out, and that our libraries are a hundred percent in support of intellectual freedom that is guaranteed by the First Amendment. So that's kind of what we're doing at the library. Next week is National Library Week, and it has a theme of there's more to the story. So I just want to take just a minute to tell you about some of the things that our libraries you might not know about. Along, along with books for individuals of all ages, we offer digital books, audiobooks, streaming movies, and music through our online services. We also have databases with forms and training videos for, to help with our community businesses. The White Mountain Library is home to a seed library. Anyone can stop by and select seed packets to use for their garden. Um, they can pick them up for free. The Rock Springs Library is home to the Children's Discovery Center, which is a hands-on, interactive mini children's museum that was put together completely with volunteer time and don't, and donations. And um, the library system is also home to the Community Fine Art Center, which is an art gallery that's free to visit. And the Green River Library and White Mountain Library also have art galleries that feature artwork by local artists. And over here in the Green River Library, they check out items such as games, puzzles, and even American Girl dolls. So we have a lot of things happen at the library. We would just like to encourage everyone to visit their libraries next week and find out all that we have to offer. You have any questions for me?
Any questions, Commissioners? Why the uptick, do you think? Is it still that post-COVID world or, you know, no school on Fridays for some schools? I mean, what's kind of the?
No school on Fridays. We do get a lot of people in on Fridays. Um, there are Rock Springs Libraries, both White Mountain and Rox, and the Rock Springs Library. Sherry and Sunny are putting together programs to bring kids in while school's not in session on Fridays, and that does help, but our libraries were busy before COVID, and I think we're just finally seeing the resurgence of that.
Makes sense. Any other comments? Well, if not, we do have a proclamation here to read. It's the National Library Week two thousand twenty-three proclamation, whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. Whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, continually expanding their collections, services, and partnerships. Whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. Whereas libraries are cornerstone, cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore be resolved that we, the Sweetwater County Commission, proclaim National Library Week, April twenty-third through the twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. And during this week, we encourage all residents to visit their Sweetwater County libraries to explore the wealth of resources available. And with that, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion's unanimous. Well, since you brought the staff, these hard-working individuals, why don't we get a picture with proclamation if we've got it?
We also have some gifts for you.
Oh, we like those.
Oh, wow.
Thank you very much. Really? The man's got their name on. Fantastic.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should welcome our communications coordinator, Jason Mauer, back to the fold. We're so happy to have you back with us.
He's been here all morning, Commissioner.
I know. But you never recognized him.
He wasn't welcome this morning. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, next on the agenda, we do have Wyoming Downs LLC to conduct parimutual wagering on live horse racing, historic horse racing, simulcast events, and rodeo events. Uh, two different resolutions, one for the approval at sixty-three Center Street in Rock Springs, another which I believe is a renewal, uh, ninety-five East Railroad in Green River. Uh, those are the respective resolutions. Do we have Andrew here in attendance?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I'm Andrew Hubert. I'm on from Wyoming Downs and the Town Barn Grill. Um, these are both renewals. The Center Street project hasn't opened yet. We are still in FEMA, working our way through the FEMA regulations. But I think once we should be done with that by the end of the month and be able to start construction, that will be about a five million dollar project to bring that building into compliance. So it should fix up that area of town really nicely. So that will be really nice when we get it open, and it will have live simulcast and the HHR, and should have some snack-style food, but not, not any restaurant-style food yet, but it will definitely bring some nice upgrades to that really old building there. And here in Green River, we would, we want to renew the resolutions because it had a sunset date on it originally. And the new resolutions don't have a sunset date. They match the current operating resolutions that are for the Liquor Depot and the other two facilities that are operating for Wyoming Horse Palace. So then we're all on the same page. So that we were trying to bring it in to match the other OTBs that are currently operating in Sweetwater County.
So you said the Center Street is not a new one? That's a renewal, even though it's not operational?
Yeah, we came the same time, we came a couple of months after the Town Barn Grill one. We were hoping to be open that same year. But then we ran into the FEMA because of substantial improvement in the new FEMA regulations. We've been working through engineering for about a year and a half now, trying to get everything on par to where we can get a building permit. So it's been way more in-depth because it's in a floodway, not just in a floodplain. If it was in a floodplain, we could have just flood-proofed the building. But when it's in a floodway, you have to prove that what you're going to do is not going to raise the water level. So what it'll have to do is the front of the building is going to come off. We're going to build a raised floor up about six feet, and then it'll have flood louvers all the way through the, on both sides of the building to where if it does flood, the water can just flow straight through the bottom of the building, not destroying any of the equipment or mitigating the flood risk of property damage, but also not causing more property damage to the buildings around it by raising the flood level.
Wow.
So it's been quite intensive. It was way more than what we originally thought it was going to be, but in the end, it'll be good for the whole area.
Hence the five million dollar investment on.
Yes.
Isn't there a basement on that?
Yeah, we have to fill that.
No kidding?
Yeah, so the basement will get filled and then concrete it over and then sealed.
Wow.
So we have to mitigate that and so it did, more involved, but overall, I think it'll turn out nice and it'll be nice to see something done with that old outdated building.
So in regards to the sunset date, I know you guys are required to have a state gaming commission license, which I believe renews every three years.
Correct.
Okay, so I guess if you're having to go back and renew that every three, why the need for the sunset?
Yeah, that, that.
Versus just, you know, doing it every three years. And I understand, I mean, I'm kind of new to this. I'm learning the difference between some of the other OTBs, and maybe that's something that we need to revisit, but I'm just curious your thoughts on wanting the sunset if you're having to go back to the state gaming commission anyway.
Yeah, that, that was when we were here. One of the Commissioners wanted to be able to revisit it. But we were the only entity and only at the two locations that was required to come and revisit it. The Liquor Depot didn't, I mean, that's our facility, but you didn't, we didn't have to revisit that one. Horse Palace doesn't have to come and revisit theirs. Like for Green River, only Town Barn Grills would have to come in every three years and see you guys to keep operating. So the other facility never has to come back in, but we had to come back in. So that's where we're, we took what we could get at the time, but when it came for renewal, we're asking to remove that to put them all on the same page.
Questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Slaughter.
In reviewing the documents and, and going back and trying to review at the time that the permits were originally issued, I think that the intent of the commission was to make sure that future commissions had the ability to look at these resolutions, and the fact that you were going back every three years to the Gaming Commission to renew those, um, just basically was a trigger so that future commissions could do the same thing. I don't see it as a real burden for you to have to come back every three years. We make people come in every year to fulfill our annual budget requests, things of that nature. So personally, I think it makes sense, you know, coming in, had it not been there, um, you know, I may not have known that this was something as a commissioner that we would have the authority to regulate. So I think for that reason, I think it's important to have a sunset date, and I would, I would think that moving forward with their request, while I'm, I'm in favor of, of approving the request, I don't think that approved, that getting rid of the sunset date would actually be of benefit to us as Commissioners. I think we would be better off continuing with a sunset date.
I would concur with that also, in that we should revisit our other entities and ask them to do the same.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's where.
Be consistent, yeah.
We, we were just, either way, like even if it's on us, then if we can revisit the other ones, then everybody comes in every three years, and then we wouldn't have a problem with that. Just where we're not the only two sites out of five that's coming in and renewing them.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
To echo what Commissioner Slaughter said, this is our opportunity to, to have a say in this process, and a previous commission chose to issue something without a sunset date. But then another commission said, you know, I, I think we need to have our eyes on this at least every three years, and that's kind of where I, where I come in at. I can't necessarily change a resolution that a previous commission um, passed in every incident. But this is something I have eyes on now, and, and that we have a say in, and this is, this, this has the potential to have real impacts in our community, both positive and negative. And I, and I think we are the final say in whether it's allowed in our community, and I don't think it behooves us to, to give up that authority we have a, and, and say it can just exist forever. I think this is something that we and future commissions should readdress at least every three years, and, and it makes sense to do that as a three-year plan because that's what the gaming commission licenses go with. Um, if we can address the other permits legally, I say that's something we should follow up on and do. That's, that's a, a, an other discussion outside of this, but as for this one, this one's in front of me. And, and I would, I would support it as it's written with a three-year, with a three-year sunset.
Okay, I mean, we'd work with that if we can, we can add the, if you guys can add the three-year sunset, and then I'll come back from, from this date, we'll move, come back in three years again. That will be fine.
Good night.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Buckley Hubert from the Town Barn Grill, ninety-five East Railroad. The reason that I'm here is because it troubles me that I've struggled for the last five years to keep my place open, okay? I asked for horse racing five years ago and bought the city, I bought the county, bought the state. They didn't want me to have it. But yet they were okay with allowing the Horse Palace to have an open blanket to open any facility that they want. Okay, so then finally, when I did get the Horse House to come in here, the way they operate, you know, I won't say anything individually, but the way they operate to me was unethical. So I asked them to move out of my establishment, okay? And by asking them to move out of my establishment, they had fruit, free rein with no say to move across town and do whatever they want and become my competition. So they are still my competition today. And so then when I revisited with the county, I had to fight tooth and nail with the old commission to get the permission to have Wyoming Downs to come back in, and then a three-year sunset date was put on me, but nobody else. And I realize your position on what you're saying about, you know, being able to revisit the three years in the sunset set, but I feel that it's only being imposed on me. It's not being imposed on anybody else in the county. And my facility creates just as much revenue as theirs does. And they have no oversight. They don't have to come and visit you. They don't have to report to you. You just get whatever reports the state gives them. But I have to come and revisit every three years. To me, it doesn't seem fair because I do as much work as anybody else for Green River in the county to provide the facility that I do and run it honestly. And so that's my position on it. I just feel that it should be an even playing field, okay? If I have to have the three-year sunset, I believe all of the entities should have to have a three-year sunset. So whether the commission has to revisit it in a resolution, or I'll bring a resolution and have all those entities come here, I'd be willing to do that. I just think that we should all be on the same playing field.
Thanks, Mr. Hubert. Appreciate that. I mean, as you can imagine, administrations change and, you know, you get Delta cards that were, you know, put before you, so I, I think we've identified that, that it probably makes more sense to have it all equal across the board and to also have a say. I mean, two weeks ago, we're receiving money from the state in regards to gambling addiction and how you guys want to spend that. Well, it seems pretty pointless in, in a sense to, you know, figure out where that money goes if you have these sunset dates that don't even exist, and the gambling can continue on anyway as long as you have the permit from the state gaming commission. So, you know, I, I understand the benefit that it brings for both parties, but I think, you know, having some ultimate say on that three-year, you know, sunset date makes sense. So I don't have any issues going back and revisiting some of these other circumstances, but yours is the first that came to our attention, so we're just trying to handle it accordingly. Any other comments or questions, Commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I just in response, you know, I think I, I agree one hundred percent that everybody should be treated equally. I think it's important for you to understand that the position we're in is we're approving something that's before us now. We had nothing to do with what was done before that. Pretty obvious today that this commission is on board with approving these resolutions. It was a long time ago, you know, once you've got what you want, sometime you're better off not to talk any further. And, and so be a little careful with that sometimes, but I think we're in favor of that. I think moving forward, we will try and put everyone on, on the same playing field. It will take us some time to do that. But we are, as I say, at this point in time, I, I believe, if reading, if I read our board correctly, in favor of moving forward with it, so just want to make sure that people understand that.
Any other comments or questions?
Oh, I just, I appreciate that. Thank you.
I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tomlin.
The three-year renewal, so everybody's on a staggered, whenever you apply, three years later, it's not everybody's on the same three-year cycle then for the state gaming license.
Yeah, the state gaming license is from renewal date, so um, like Wyoming Downs might be this fall, and then Horse Palace might be next spring, and then three oh seven racing is, I think they still have two more years before they renew again. So it just kind of rotates for whenever, whenever the application was.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
We need to get more money, though, out of all this.
It's the best comment I've heard. Commissioners, I'd entertain a motion to approve resolutions twenty-three oh four CCO one, as well as twenty-three oh four CCO two, with the understanding that there's a sunset date on both of those, which will go into effect until April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-six, at which point they will be reevaluated.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close nay. Motion carries. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.
I, I would just like to ask another question, though.
No, we're done.
How many people are you seeing as a total going through your establishment? Just take Green River, one entity, how many? Well, no, how many people we have to treat for gambling addiction? No. Thank you. That helps. I guess we have to have one of our luncheons there. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting me get out of order.
Anything for you, Commissioner. Next up, Commissioners, tab D eight, request to reclassify position and request to restaff a vacancy in court security. Got Mr. McLean here. Good afternoon, Gary.
Good afternoon. Uh, Commissioner Tomlin says she will be making the mint juleps for the public. Uh, they want to attend.
Thank you.
Yeah.
For volunteering, what do I have to do? You have to tell me there.
So uh, before you, as a request to restaff and, and, and reclassify um, court security position, we had a recent resignation. And we discussed this issue last week that we had eliminated the corporal rank. Um, and as those positions became vacant, we would not be requesting to restaff that. So corporal's a higher rank. This should result in cost savings depending on the health insurance part, but should
This should result in cost savings depending on the health insurance part, but should result in significant cost savings to the county. So it's kind of a two-part request, I think, to one, restaff the vacancy, but instead of restaffing at a corporal rank, we'll be restaffing it at a deputy rank, a court security rank.
Thanks, Gary. Any questions, commissioners, for Gary, or looks like we have Under Sheriff Tom at cheer as well?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question as to why this wasn't handled as part of our consent agenda, Gary? This would have been one that would typically fall in.
I think just because there was the component of the corporal part, we're restaffing the position. And then also the classification, I think we just wanted to let the board know this started before all of you in trying to essentially eliminate another tier of classification within the system. And so we're getting almost to the end of the corporal ranks. I think it was just really to communicate that that, that's occurring and we're just about, I think we have one corporal rank left. And so other than that, that's it. And, and then the savings that we expect is, as you said, there is around 16,000 annually.
Any other questions, commissioners? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
Chairman.
Mr. Richards.
I'd move to approve the restaffing request as presented.
Got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I would second that.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Richards, second by Commissioner Toman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion's unanimous, 4-0. Next is Tab D9, request for an additional position in the land use department for fiscal, fiscal year 2324. Gary and Mr. Bingham here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, county commissioners. So to cycle back a little bit, the county at one time had two planner threes, had Eric working there, had a public lands planner, had some technical people in the department. And through the course of attrition, voluntary separation agreements, the, we have reduced those numbers down, just in the three positions that I mentioned. You're at nearly $400,000 in salary that were reduced in that period. Say roughly 2012 to 2020. And as some of you will remember, back in, around 2018, starting in about 2018, the counties and the cities started entertaining discussions about cooperative economic development that heated up in 2019 and I think 20 originally is where we kind of signed the formal agreement to move ahead with that. And, and Eric and Kayla have been working on that. We've been covering some of the planning issues within the department, some of the lower level planning issues with, with Jim Zimmerman's position and some of the other staff. We had discussed with the board originally at some point, depending on the level of economic activity, particularly industrial activity, that eventually we would have to bring in an entry level planner position. As we've discussed with the board previously, these are positions that are challenging to get in the front range with the growth in Utah right now along the Utah Valley. These are positions that are number one, hard to get. And number two, the folks that we had, had been able to recruit were not really fit for this area, meaning we had folks from Boulder, Colorado coming to Sweetwater County and wanted to apply planning strategies for Boulder, Colorado and Sweetwater County. As you might imagine, that didn't work well. So when we brought Eric on board originally, Eric was relatively new, out of school. We set forth a path of training, education and certifications and sort of brought him up with the cultures and values and goals and objectives and strategic initiatives for planning in Sweetwater County. And, and I think I'd hope that you'd all agree that that's worked much better. So we're kind of at a point right now that, that we have kind of convergence of three things. I think one is that Eric is working more and more in economic development. I think we all agree that's an important component of growth in Sweetwater County. The second part of that is that we don't have any qualified personnel within the department to take on some of those roles. You folks all had a chance today to speak with many of the people that manage public lands. Commissioner Toman, you've been involved in a number of public lands initiatives. And so after Mark Kotleb, who was taking on those public lands issues, Eric has assumed those roles as well as really all of the planning roles in the department. And so to continue to move in that direction, number one, marginalizes our ability to do economic development. And second of all, it doesn't leave us any competent or trained staff to continue the county planning efforts. So after, well, and this has probably been a couple of years ago, this has been discussed, but now seems to be the right time with some increasing economic development on the horizon and the growth of the economic development is to request, we're doing the same thing, trying to bring in an entry level planner position that we can grow and develop in that area, assist Eric in that role. The third leg to this is that we have some staff that will be retiring in the near future and some of those roles and responses probably makes sense to be handled by this person. If we can get them on board, get them trained, it does take some time to get oriented to this environment. And so our main goal right now would be to bring it up, to get authorization, prove to fill it, put it in the budget. And then in this next fiscal year to start the process to restaff that entry level planner position. So one of the difficulties we had is in trying to gauge what dollar amounts to look in here. We shared some information with, with Eric and I think you have in your packets from around the state and some data around the regions. Obviously it depends on how specialized the departments are as to what the planning positions do. The bigger the departments, the more specialized they are. Now, we're looking a little more general than that. But we think for right now, you know, maybe a position somewhere around the $55,000 level. A total cost of employment, just maybe a little bit over a hundred thousand is where we'd want to start the position, depending on health insurance, obviously. So Eric, do you want to add anything to that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gary did a great job of covering just kind of the layout of the department was and over the years since 2011, when I assumed the land use director role, just kind of, we started with those three planner, professional planner positions that were down there and a planning technician. So we actually had four planning personnel down there. And those have all been eliminated. So and then the extension of, just as Gary has stated, with all the public lands, the economic development, the planning, all of that. Just need that additional help down there. The, kind of what I have envisioned for this is definitely with entry level and to train in multiple areas, nuisance, some code enforcement. I've got definitely things spread thin around the, the land use staff right now. And it can be overwhelming for sure down there. So as far as workload, we average 18 public hearings a year. And just last year we had 26. So it just shows you that those have increased. Violations have gone from 42 to 77. And fire inspections went from 36 to 57. So they've almost doubled. So any help that you could be, I much appreciate, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks, Gary. Any questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Slaughter.
If, if I could go back, Gary, I had a couple of questions, but you, I think you answered them in your testimony. And your testimony may be just a little bit different than the way, the way I read this. Because when you were talking about the position, you were talking about potentially funding it for the next fiscal year budget and creating a position for the next fiscal year. That was my point in looking at this. I was going to ask with respect to that. But if you look at the, and the actual request for the position, it shows that the anticipated hire date would be six, one of 23, which would be during the current fiscal year. So if, if there is money that's in the budget that we could use to fund that position for that month, I guess that would be okay. But in my mind, it would make more sense to, to try and bring the, the position forth in the next, in the next year's fiscal budget.
So Commissioner Slaughter, yeah, the, the, actually the, the, as you recall, because of when we do payroll, that June 1 start date will actually be in the next fiscal year, meaning that payroll would actually be in seven, one. So to be perfectly honest with you, we wouldn't have somebody by six, one, no matter what we did. We were just trying to give a date. So that from a hiring standpoint, the earliest they could start in next fiscal year would be six, one. Cause they wouldn't actually be paid until seven, one, which would be out of the next budget year. So that's a little bit confusing, but yeah. I, I think realistically, you're probably looking something more like early fall, late summer before we could find somebody who number one, had the right credentials, had interest in living, could get here, things like that. So I don't think in 10 was really even start recruitment until number one, the position was approved until we knew where the budget was approved and then start from there. So sometime after June, but so.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, not so much a question for them, just, just a comment. Few months ago, after a lot of discussions with Eric, I, I encouraged him to, to come to us to, to request this position. Initially, what I, what I told him is he should just include it in his, his budget request and we could hash it out then, then. And he, he felt the brain Gary in and, and doing it this way was a, was a better way to do it. And I'm glad they did because Gary explained this probably a whole lot better than I can. But to give a little background, I, I was on P and Z for about seven years and during that time I watched the county commission go through some real budget crises, a lot of cuts, they rift positions. They, they, there, there was separations, there was retirements and that department got shrunk down to a skeleton crew. He went from three full-time planners in that office. In addition to him, I, I, I believe there, there was, there was administrative staff in there. We had, we had a land, public land planner. And, and now it's very, very small. And we've asked Eric to do a lot of things. And he has risen to the occasion. He does a phenomenal job at each one of those things that we've asked him to do. But I, but I look at the writing on the wall and planning needs some support. We as a commission, the commissions before us have asked, asked our core employees to do more and more and more and more. And at a certain point, we, we may have asked him to do too much and not saying Eric's been asked to do too much. But I, he, he's going to need support going forward. There's going to be other retirements in that office. Including, including Eric, I, I don't think Eric's going anywhere, but he's, he's up for possible retirement pretty soon. And we, we really need to be thinking about the future of that office and, and how important it is to Sweetwater County. So I'd, I'd really encourage you guys to support this request.
Yeah, I think, you know, looking back, the idea of voluntary separations and, you know, the attrition, it, it works well. But sometimes you can cut too deep and it's been beneficial. If I heard Gary write, it's, you know, $400,000 over the last 10 or 12 years since that all took place. So, you know, financially that makes sense, but sometimes if it's an extra burden on the department or if the deep, or if the cut is too deep, then you haven't really accomplished much. So, you know, I don't want it to open up the door for we're bringing all these positions back, but I think in this situation, given you know, the history of it, my conversation with Commissioner Richards on it, it makes sense. So.
Mr. Chairman. One, one thing I'd just like to comment in, in relation to that, that I think is important to understand. Part of the downsizing and part of why we're back today is there's probably no area of the county that, that is most impacted by growth and recession directly than planning and zoning. When things slow down, there's less industrial, less home building, less development, then the needs go down in that area. But conversely, when industrial activity goes up and they start drilling wells all over the place and they're building industrial property. As you know, Eric's been heavily involved in, in the industrial siding process and we've got, I don't know, three or four of those slated to come up in there. Then we've got to be willing to kind of move with it. So I don't think it makes sense to have staff up here just to be consistent over time when the demand's not there, but it doesn't make sense for it to be down here when the demand starts to go up. And so it's kind of a question of timing for everybody to really kind of monitor that as, and be able to flex a little bit as the times and economy change because it does directly. I think there was a time, and if my number's wrong, I apologize, but there was a time when Eric started here, when we brought him on board, I think they had 30 subdivisions at that particular time. And so you could imagine the demand on staff and fire and inspection and the roads and, and those things at that time. And then, you know, that fails off over a period and there's less activity. So that's really what the attempt was is to sort of flex those that were to a level that were appropriate or anticipated activity. But I, I think that activity is increasing and then the move to tackle, engage in the economic development issue, which is no small component on. So I just wanted to make sure we understood that context.
Any other comments or questions, commissioners? Hearing none, thank you both. And what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richards.
I would move to approve the requested additional full-time planner position as presented.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
I would second that.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion's unanimous, 4-0. Next up is item 10. Request approval of resolution 2304 CCO3 authorizing another snow holiday. Gary is here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, county commissioners. For those of you that complained about not enough water, this is what you get. So it seems like only a couple of days, we were discussing a similar situation only a month or so ago. And, and we're doing that again, as you know, in April. I'm, I'm sorry, March, April 4th, sorry, April 4th. We had a significant winter storm, blizzard that passed through the area, which most of the county is still feeling the impacts of. Many of the roads have been turned into rivers and streams. And a good share of the county is still impassable. So similar to the first one, this was, is a resolution identifying April 4th as a snow holiday. I've made two minor amendments just to clarify some issues that were ambiguous from folks at last time. One is just that the holiday is, is from midnight to midnight, that, that whole day. Obviously people work different shifts. Not everybody works the same time. And just clarifying that our policy is when an individual is called to work on a holiday, that that's 2:40 code time. So I just added those two things to be clear. And I'll entertain any questions.
Thanks, Gary. Any questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, yes, just, I, I hate to be redundant, but once again, I, I want to make sure, because there was some question about the last time that we passed this, that this is resolving the issue that we have with our sheriff's department, the road and bridge and those people, so that we don't hear something tomorrow. That they're unhappy with this. So if, if there's anybody who's got any issues with that and talking with Gary, it sounds like that's taken care of. Just wanted that on the record to make sure that we're okay with that.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, Mr. Legursky did say last time that declaring it a snow holiday didn't make anything different for his employees. Has this, does this take care of it or? You're okay? Okay, thank you.
I'd entertain a motion to approve resolution 2304 CCO3 authorizing the snow holiday as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Slaughter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion's unanimous. Thanks, Gary.
Thanks, guys.
Next up under Tab D is item number 11. Half afraid to read this one after this morning, but be careful. It's the award of the fiscal year 2023 asphalt overlay project. Mr. Legursky here with us. Good afternoon, Gene.
Great diction, Mr. Chairman, on that one. That one's good. So what we have before you is an award of our annual asphalt overlay project. We only had one bidder this year. Kilgore Company's doing businesses, Lewis and Lewis, Inc. This project is completely funded by Road Fuel Packs, doesn't come out of the general fund. And you can see by my letter. Um, and you can see by my letter that um. If I had any equipment, I was low, I would have had to do it, but since I don't have any equipment, I can't do it.
Any questions on this, commissioners? Hearing none. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to. Approve the bid for the twenty-three asphalt overlay project. To Kilgore Companies D B doing business as Lewis and Lewis Incorporated in the sum of two million five hundred and seventy thousand four fifty-six. And authorize the chairman to sign all necessary project documents.
Thanks, Commissioner. We do have a motion to approve by Commissioner Toman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay.
So it does not come out of our county money.
It comes out of county money that is from fuel tax.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion's unanimous on that four zero. Next up under tab D is item number twelve, the award of the Lagoon Road Reconstruction Project.
Um, another project that comes out of fuel tax. This was done, um, as you can imagine, when that road was first put in, it's point six miles. It's just north of where the jail detention center justice center facility is. Um, that road is put in strictly for the West Side Water and Sewer District Lagoon. Um, you know, so light truck traffic, um, and intermediate traffic, you know, a couple of times a day down there. Now it's an industrialized part of the county and that road is seeing significant usage. Um, on it, the the truck traffic's increased almost six hundred percent in the last three years. Um, a lot of heavy truck traffic, um, Sun Rock moved out there, so every piece of concrete that's bored, it's got to come in as raw aggregate and it's got to go out as concrete. And then Dominion Energy um has bought some places out there and it just, it's increasing. So we need to fix the road. We need to widen it a little bit. Um, we're gonna add, it's about sixty percent concrete, forty percent asphalt. To take care of all the turning lanes and everything like that. We actually had two bidders, Devenardi Construction and Kilgore Companies doing businesses, Lewis and Lewis. And you can see that the Devenardi Construction Company was low. Um, again, this is out of fuel tax money, uh, will not come out of the general budget.
Thanks, Gene. Any questions, commissioners? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the award of the Lagoon Road Reconstruction Project to Devenardi Construction Company in the sum. Two million one hundred and sixty-five thousand and eight hundred and seventy dollars and authorize the chair to sign.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Richards is our second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay. Motion's unanimous, four oh. Next up, item fourteen is the approval of the grant easement between West Side Water and Sewer District and Sweetwater County.
What this is is in the design of the um Lagoon Road. We noticed that it'd be more beneficial if we added some culvert and a different way to transfer the water into a ditch that ultimately goes into the bidder creek. Um, we did not have an easement for this because it runs across West Side Water and Sewer. So we need a little bit of an easement from them. They're okay to grant that to us. Um, we just need to have you guys formally ratified that you will accept this grant. Um, and it'll be part of um the county records.
Questions, commissioners? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
I'd move to approve the grant of easement between West Side Water and Sewer District and Sweetwater County. Allow the chairman to sign all necessary documents.
Do you have a motion to approve by Commissioner Richards? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close nay. Motion's unanimous. Next we have. Yeah, if you don't mind, thanks. Item number fifteen under tab D. Is a request for approval of amendment one to the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three C M A Q. Program grant agreement, which is also known as the congestion mitigation and air quality. We do have Christina Marshall, I'm told. All this time I've been calling you Marshall Christina. I just learned it's Marshall. Someone tipped me off on that.
Like seashell?
Good afternoon.
Good. I'm glad you're working on your French. So, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, the Wyoming Department of Transportation previously awarded Sweetwater County a C M A C program grant. The project requires a twenty percent cash match and must be ex- or completed by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Since approving the agreement, Y dot is requesting Sweetwater County to approve amendment one. In order to add buy American provisions to the original agreement. So the purpose of the C M A C program, as you noted, is the uh congestion mitigation and air quality program. Is to alleviate air quality issues created by energy development and other industrial activity in the area or vicinity. Sweetwater County C C M A project consists of applying magnesium chloride dust suppressant to about seventy-eight miles of county roads. For a total budget of three hundred twenty-four thousand eight twenty-three. At the end of the day, this will create a better quality road surface and improve safety issues with dust from the roadway. So the actual grant award was two hundred fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. With the match of sixty-four thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars. A few notes. Amendment one, we actually have no impact to this project since there are no steel. Iron products or manufactured products and construction materials, but we still got to do it. The required cash match was actually included in the fiscal year twenty-three budget. It might be part of our carryover just because of timing. As you know, the Public Works Director has challenges with the weather. He is here to answer questions about the project, although, and that's Gene Legurski, Public Works Director. So I've attached in your packet, in case you were just very curious, the actual road list that will benefit from this project. That's the first item. Second, I have amendment one. And then third, you have the uh executed fiscal year twenty-three C M A C agreement. And with that, I'm available for questions or again, uh, Gene Legurski's here.
Thank you, Christina. Any comments or questions for Christina or Gene, commissioners? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve and authorize the chairman to sign amendment one to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three C M A C program grant agreement.
Do you have a motion to approve by Commissioner Slaughter? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay. Motion's unanimous, four oh.
Great.
Thanks, Christina. Moving on. Looks like you're still up. Uh, item sixteen is consideration of approval to submit a local technical assistance grant application to the Economic Development Administration. And the U S Department of Commerce.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is my last agenda item. So Sweetwater County has the opportunity to apply for a local technical assistance grant through E D A. Under the U S Department of Commerce. Uh, as authorized under the Public Works in Economic Development Act of nineteen sixty-five. There is a required cash match of fifty percent. So the purpose of E D A's tech, local technical assistance program. Is to assist recipients in quote unquote developing economic development plans and studies. Designed to build capacity and guide the economic prosperity and result zilliancy of an area or region. So Sweetwater County's proposed E D A project. Consists of a feasibility study to explore recreational opportunities and implementation in the area. This project addresses Sweetwater County's declining coal industry and the need for economic diversification. So, of course, we don't know how much it would cost until we go out and solicit proposals. But based on other uh feasibility studies, we estimated total budget of a hundred thousand dollars, of which fifty thousand would be the county's responsibility. So a couple of notes. First, I want to emphasize that the Sweetwater County two twenty twenty comprehensive economic development strategy lists. As one of the top priorities to expand outdoor recreation and local events. They have the potential to attract visitors from outside the area. The online application process will take at least sixty days and the required cash match will be included in next year's budget under grant projects. And for reference, the name of the E D app, E D A application is the Butch Cassidy project for reference. The recreational facilities committee, which was established by you. On March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three is overseeing this project. I like to say that group is the Wild Bunch. Led by uh Chairman or Commissioner Richards. So in your packet, you have the legal documents, the actual narrative is in draft format online. Uh, the committee will be overseeing the final contents of that application. With that, um, that is why in your motion, uh, I'm requesting also to be appointed the lead. Although the chairman would need to sign the legal documents.
Thanks, Christina. Very well said. Any questions or comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
Yes, this is step one of pursuing the projects that the the we created a committee to pursue. What was the name of that project again?
The Butch Cassidy project? Or the Recreation Facilities Committee?
That's not the Bunny and Clyde project. That would be worse, I think.
Well, Butch Cassidy is apropos. He's our, he's our local outlaw. Might as well create some, um, this chairman, I would, I would move to approve the submission of a local technical assistance grant application. To the Economic Development Administration authorize a chairman to sign all required documents and appoint Christina Marshall as the application lead contact.
Second. Do you have a motion to approve by Commissioner Richards? Do we have a sir, excuse me, we have a second by Commissioner Slaughter. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the Wild Bunch signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay. Motion's unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. We are about twenty-five minutes ahead. The next discussion will be on the Buckboard Marina realignment, which is slated for two fifty-fives.
They've been too soon waiting all day.
Do we need a break? Do you want to keep pushing through?
I'm good as long as they're all here too.
You have your whole team here? Or do you want us to? We can take a quick break if you want to wait for.
Five, ten minutes.
We'll take a ten minute break. We'll resume at two thirty. Okay, we'll call this meeting back to order. Where we left off was tab B. Under item eighteen is. Guy signed on. Did he? Get logged on? Yeah, okay.
Try and, try and load the document before.
We've got the discussion of the Buckboard Marina realignment. We've got members from the Ashley National Forest with us here today.
Good afternoon.
Commissioners. Good afternoon. I'll do some introductions real quick. Um, my name is Brian Wilson. I'm the district ranger out of the flaming gorge.
Hang on one sec, if you don't mind. We're having more technical difficulties here. Okay, hang on one sec, Brian. Let's see if it doesn't, you can use mine. You're good. Chairman Commissioners, uh, thanks for the opportunity to meet with you guys today.
Do some introductions real quick. I'm Brian Wilson. I'm Brian Wilson. I'm the flaming gorge district ranger on the Ashley National Forest. Um, that's also the flaming gorge national recreation area. Portion of our district covers Wyoming. And, um, I'll do a few introductions. We've got Charette Manomo. She is our range and invasive species manager. We've got Kevin Clegg. He is. Yeah, Kevin is our, um, recreation program manager. We got Brett Heath. He is our facilities manager. We've got Logan Lennon. He is our L E O and he is assigned to the Ashley National Forest, uh, but he is a national resource. And online, we've got Jason Roundy, who is our special use permit administrator. And so we're here to discuss the proposal, um, to extend the boundaries for the, at the Buckboard Marina. Currently that this, this is out for public scoping, um, and that will be ending Friday, the twenty-first. Um, I did get a call earlier from Sue, the forest supervisor, who said that we may be extending that public scoping. So once we get the feedback from that, uh, we will be going over all the comments and concerns and then moving forward from there. So the Buckboard Marina is one of our partners, one of the three marinas we have on the flaming gorge district, uh, the only one that's in Wyoming. Um, they provide opportunities for the rec users of Wyoming, um, that we can't do as an agency. Um, why we're here discussing this, um, one is to help preserve the recreational opportunities for the rec users in Wyoming. Uh, one is to help the Buckboard Marina be viable and operational. Um, during the decline of the water levels. I know that we had a discussion today with B O R, which was great. To hear that there's some talk now of getting back to sixty twenty-seven, but we're currently at sixty oh seven. We also heard one of the proposals was to take another thirty-five feet down. Um, the marina has been moving his docks as the water levels have been dropping throughout this water shortage, moving his docks further and further. Another thirty-five feet of water drop would be devastating. Um, one of the things that we found when we were talking to the region. Uh, forest, foresters, uh, the regional foresters, excuse me, um, was that? The. Excuse me, I had it in my notes. I wanted to make sure I said it right.
Yeah, where's that?
Anyway, the jurisdiction, I'll just do the best I can. Um, the jurisdiction of our. Special use permits for marinas is to count land as acreage. We're currently, and we were unaware of this, uh, currently we've been, um, charging or not charging, but counting water as acreage. Uh, for all three of the marinas that we've got. And so, um, they're allotted up to eighty acres. And so we'll be showing you some slides here shortly that show the existing where it's at now, where we're counting water as acreage. Towards the marinas allotted area, um, versus the proposal to actually have some land additional. Change the boundaries where that water acreage is now on land. Um, the region told us that was put in place. I think years ago, but part of the reason why was so that if there is drought conditions or hardships. Uh, the marinas would have the ability to still be sustainable and operate. Uh, this would be a perfect example, the low water levels. Um, if he didn't, wasn't able to move his docks, they'd be sitting on dirt or, or sand or in the mud. Um, and you, you, you mentioned you were down there recently and you saw how far out, uh, the other two marinas that we have. Their water levels drop faster, whereas the Buckboard Marina, the slope of the land is more gradual. So each foot of water, he's losing a lot more ground. So. So mainly to help. Uh, preserve the rec opportunities for the Wyoming rec users, but also to make sure that, um, or to help. Our partner with the marina, um, have a viable operations. And so. Couple other things too that we've struggled with, uh, on the south. Buckboard area in general. Um. We've got some issues with public safety. We've got. People shooting across waterways. We've got, um. Violations, uh. Logan has, you know, counseled me and my staff not to send our staff there after dark because it's not safe, uh, to address violations. Um. Sanitation, we've got sanitation issues with people dumping their, their black water and gray water, um, garbage. Um. There's been destruction of government property. We put up signs, uh, and they get shot up, um, signs. Uh, to, uh, be quiet after out, you know, uh, quiet times and not to be shooting guns, uh, they get shot up. And there's a rule that, that there's not supposed to be any, um, camping a quarter mile from any developed, uh, site. And so, um. The main concern has been on the south buckboard. Portion there, um, and the owners of the marina have. Part of that area that they want to develop, change their boundaries. They want to open up some group campsites. Um, so it's a restricted area now that people are currently, um, camping in. I know Logan deals with a lot of those issues with the, the stay limits, um, as well as the sanitation and, and some of the public safety issues right now. Um. On the north buckboard side. Um. There's a proposal to be able to utilize that area to move the docks so he could have enough water for boats to pull in, uh, and function as a marina. I don't know. Can they see the slides? Now'd be a good time for the slides.
No, we're having that issue on our end too. None of ours are connecting, so.
I've got it.
So.
Is it something I'm supposed to do here? There you go.
And we've got some, we, we printed out some copies too, but so that's a, a quick. Uh, background of, of what we're in the process of now. And so we've also got Jason Roundy, who is the special use. Uh, permits expert on the district who could answer some questions, but we're all here to hopefully we can answer the questions and concerns that you may have. Up to this point, right now it's still in public scoping. We're still getting comments. Uh, Friday is the original date that that should stop, the twenty-first. Um, however, that will probably be extended according to the call I got from. Uh, the forest supervisor and then the plan from there is to look at the comments and then move from there. So, um, can you guys see the slides? You made a bunch of copies too, right?
Well, we can see them.
Okay, okay. So. So the one that Kevin's got up now, that is the existing, uh. In current boundaries of the Buckboard Marina, and you can see, uh, all the, in the blue there where the water is covered as acreage. And the next slide Kevin will show is the proposed boundaries. Um, getting rid of the acreage on the water and putting it on land, um, which over on the north buckboard or over on the north side there. Um, in the red would be deep enough water to also support his docks. Um, we've been really concerned with the different projectures of water levels. We heard something today about possibly being up to six sixty twenty-seven, but at the current level, we were hearing. Not too long ago, a proposal of taking another thirty-five feet from the reservoir. And so we've been, we've been very concerned. Um. And I won't go into a lot of the other complexities, but we're also in the process of working on a sustainable water system too, with the drop in water levels. Uh, we were pulling from the reservoir, treating that, and that was used for the Buckboard Rec Facility as well as the marina. Um, we were not able to get underneath the sunlight penetration. And so we were trying to treat water with toxic algae, um, with lots of chlorine. And it was very hard for us to keep up with that this last season. And so. Getting out in the further depths, we're hoping to tap into the main channel and. But that's a different, a different conversation than the one you want to have right now, but I'm just throwing that out there that that's something that we're also. Working on that we would like to speak with you after you give us the questions you have currently.
Thanks, Brian. Questions, Commissioners? Guess. For me, it was, I don't feel like the question was really answered this morning. Um. But it just seems like a heck of a lot of work. What's, you know, essentially on unknowns. So what happens if this land swap takes place and then next year it's even worse and the year after that it's even worse? Um. I mean, I understand that conditions are difficult, but. From what we heard this morning, its levels are going to be full again and we're going to go up fifteen feet. Now you're telling me, you know, you've heard. Potentially another thirty-five feet down. Yeah, articles about no new releases coming out of the dam. I don't know what that means.
I hope that, I hope that that's right. And the B O R would be a much, they would be more of an authority on the water level subject than we would be. Um, however. You know, the water levels have been very challenging for us to work through, uh, devastating for the folks who are in the marinas where they're constantly moving their docks further and further out. Um, and so. Yeah, I, I can't, I can't answer the water levels with any authority, but we're hearing a lot of different things too.
Yeah. And I mean, I, I understand that. I feel like the reason no one's answering the questions because they simply just don't know. Yeah, but you know, ultimately it ma, it's a matter of how much they're letting out on. You know, the damn side of things and everyone dances around the question because it's a difficult one and. You know, they have other obligations, but I think ultimately the end goal is to bring up pal and mead, which doesn't help us at all. So, you know, now we're faced with having to do additional. I guess we're not, but you're, you are, you know, how do you account for some of that in the marina? And, you know, and then we have the public input and pressure from. Just getting rid of the marina, you know, as a whole. And is that the, the ultimate goal and the silver lining in this type of a situation? So I think that's why, you know, we brought you here today to try and help us understand and. Figure out the reasoning behind it. And if it's something that. Seems like a worthwhile thing. And I think we have a lot of questions on that.
Sure. We'll do our best to answer your questions.
Comments, questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman. Brian, thank you for being here and thank the rest of you for being here. Um, as I, as I look at the proposed amendment, uh, it looks to me. And you're going to move water acreage to the land and follow what is, is really the existing shoreline. If I have that right, so if. If there was another thirty-five foot drop and that shoreline moved out, it seems to me like this amendment. Would not encompass the new shoreline. It would be outside. The, the amended permitted area would, when we then be in even worse position.
So Brett, do you want to speak to the issue on the water levels?
So. My understanding of it is, is that line is at the high watermark. And that doesn't go down. Um, there's another issue where. And that doesn't go down. Um, there's another issue where that shoreline is. Under a different jurisdiction than their permit at that point. So their permit goes from a high, high water line. Um, so it wouldn't change. With the water dropping in the future.
So.
Commissioner Tom.
So the new site, if you went up to the other acreage, is it a steeper uh bank that would allow you to get into deeper waters? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes, ma'am. If you look at the. Yeah, in the red there, and we did um some research. In the red there, there's deep enough levels to even if the water went down. Um, we would be able to, or there would be able to be docks there and they would be sustainable.
Mister Chairman. As as you stated earlier, I I did make the statement, I was out there last Sunday. And looked at this, I have had many comments from concerned citizens with respect to this land swap. And the concern is first and foremost that the current permittee is not abiding by. What the per- the public perception is, the. Rules that should be contained within that permit. Um, the last couple of years, there have been no facilities there for people to. Drain the gray water or the black water from their boats. As you say, that's a problem. It's going to be a bigger problem if if we lose a marina.
I could speak to that one real quick.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, the pump ahead, that's actually our responsibilities for a service to keep that going and keep that out in the water. Um, we have had with the dropping, well, we pulled that out to remodel it. It was in disrepair and we were. In the process of remodeling, we've got that almost done. We got to put a couple of doors on it and then it'll be ready to go. Um. And we've been doing the groundwork on extending the lines for those services. So the pump ahead. Um, that is, that's on us, not not the marina.
Okay, and and certainly that, you know, that that creates a problem with the water levels that are currently out there. If the water levels drop thirty five more feet, there's no, there's no water in that bay. So it doesn't matter at that point in time, I don't think. But the other concerns that the public has had with this is when, when he went in. He has gone in and graded off a lot of the area up there. When he did, he cut some of the water lines and things that were potentially, and and this is all. Things that people have brought to my attention. I'm I'm just reporting what they've told me. And so there's been no water available down at the docks for people to wash their boats out, do things of that nature also. And also that there has been no, uh, the, one of the big concerns with respect to that. Is that there's been no water there for potential fire protection if there were an issue there. So the 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 people have their own boats and who have slips out there are. Relying on their own fire protection, um extinguishers and things of that nature. The other thing is that there's no place there on site for people within the lake. To refill their boats. Apparently there's an an area, if you take your boat out on a trailer, you can go out and get gas at at the marina. But all of those things in the public's perception are things that are necessary for a marina. And in in looking at this, and that's the reason I went out, I spent a couple, I've I've spent my entire life out there. I've been recreating in that area for fifty years. But I went out again, just to, you know, once again, look at this and and try and wrap my mind around how this would help. And I can't see how moving that acreage is is helping moving that to the north. And and the concern is, once again, that there'll be limited public access to that if we do that. And and certainly that's what we as county commissioners try and try and protect. And and influence is the constituency that we've got and their right to to recreate out in those areas. So those are the things that there are of utmost importance. Um, you know, by taking away that area to the north. It it's an area that people have recreated. Like I say, you know, you go out there at any given time, you know, you'll have. A hundred people out there on a, on a Saturday or Sunday in the summertime. And I don't think that that's an area where there's typically quite as many of the the people who are camping. I think that's typically more the South Buckboard area where you're seeing that on the bays, which are no longer there as as I referenced earlier today. I hope that they're right and it is coming back to that sixty twenty seven level. Um, but. I I guess the big thing is addressing those concerns within the permit. And that's the 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 question that has arisen most from for me as a commissioner is can we get a copy? Of what that permit states, that the permittee will actually require, uh, what is required of him to have a marina there. And then how we can influence policy with respect to to that with a with questions to the national forest.
Yeah, let me, hey, Jason, can you hear us? Cause he can probably answer some of those questions and give you some clear guidance on that.
Yeah, I can, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, do you want to try to answer the commissioners' questions and uh address the issue with uh the permit?
Well, part of that, uh. Co- request to get a copy of the permit would have to go through FOIA because it's got a. Those permits have P I I information that prevents me from just doling them out to anybody. Um. I think if a FOIA request was submitted and approved, then yeah, that would probably be possible. Um, generally, the permits though are. Fairly basic in the terms and conditions themselves, and then you have their operating plan on how they plan to operate. Things like that that tie to the permit, but they're they're sort of separate documents, creating one complete document. Um, so we've been working on them with getting their master development plan completed, which would address some of the issues that. You're talking about now on how they plan to develop out there, what they plan to develop. And the pumper dock that's out there, you know, some of the issues that we had out there. And was, it was pulled out to get repaired, and then by the time we got most of the repairs done where we could get it back in for the public so they could have water and. And a pump out dock, the water was so shallow, we couldn't, we couldn't extend our uh. Utilities to connect it because there was nowhere out there deep enough to put that big dock in. Um, so that's part of that uh issue. If if the water continued to drop, which it's. You know, that's a big if, you know, if we have a good year, it's great. But there, nobody can guarantee that, and it takes, takes a pretty considerable length of time to go through this process to. To, you know, to get couple of public feedback to uh make, try to make changes that benefit both the public and. The permit holder and and that's kind of why we're seeking your guys' comment now so that we can kind of try to plan and. And move forward, but that bay that was uh color coded pink. Is deep enough that should the water levels continue to recede instead of go up, it would. We would be able to tie in that pumper dock there um to his docking system as well. Um. And and so there's quite a few different aspects going on to that that we're trying to work through.
So I've got a question for you on that, Jason, and I'm not sure that you can answer, but maybe you can, as we're talking about water levels again, but. Kind of what I was alluding to earlier, you know, if you move forward with this, I mean, what is that? Change, you know, if they continue to release water out of the gorge, how much more would that? Or I guess time, I mean, that's inevitable and no one can answer that, but the depth is what, twenty feet more, fifteen feet more? Before you're just back to, you know, square one?
Well, my understanding is that that bay that we're looking at is deep enough. That even if the lake continued to drop another thirty five feet, it would be deep enough to continue to service docks. Um, both theirs and ours, um, so that we could continue to serve the public out there. The the bay between the marina and South Buckboard gets pretty shallow, so we've struggled with both. You know, placing docks, maintaining them, you know, at a safe level and. And then getting that pumper dock in, we just couldn't extend the utilities far enough out, and then we would have had to put that thing. Right in the middle, you know, of that bay would about, would have been about the deepest location we could have got it to and then. Our existing utilities that are out there, um, they haven't been destroyed, they've just been disconnected, but they're. They're so shallow in comparison to where the water level is right now, we'll have to extend everything, the water, the sewer. The power hookups in in order to get that pumper dock in this spring.
I mean, I I think to an, to a sense, you can understand the situation and, you know, what seems out of everyone's control relative to the water levels. On the other flip side, the feedback that we're hearing is, you know, relative to these permitting issues and the requirements within, and I think that's what. Commissioner Slaughter was alluding to is just the fear from the general public is that the marina is. Going by the wayside and it's going to turn into, you know, a campground and a restaurant and bar or whatever else is down there. And that they won't have any access or they won't be required to produce any access and or required to. Continue to have a marina. And so I think that's the big uncertainty that no one can get comfortable with on this matter.
Well, and I can understand that, and I think part of that um issue, the reason we're looking at it is so that we can maintain a marina out there. Again, a lot of this depends on water issues that none of us can control. You know, if the water comes up and we have winters like this every year for the next several years. This issue becomes a moot point. It's, it's not something that we would even worry too much about. And I'm. Uh, in talking to the marina owner, their their desire is to keep the docks where they're at now. So if the water comes up. They're not looking to move the docks just to move them. There, this is just a a what if plan. Should the water issues continue to drop to a point where we have no other choice, but to push out into that bay. Where it's deep enough where we could continue to have docks and and things to serve the public.
Mister Chairman.
Mr. Slaughter. A- as I stated earlier, you know, one of the major issues is the fact that there is no place for anyone to get gas. For their boats on the, on the lake at this point in time also. Once again, understanding the levels or where they're at, there, there's an issue, but there's a perception. Or and and it comes from secondhand information, I think through the public, that the permit holder has no desire. To put the gasoline in there. Now that doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever, but it's a big issue for us from the public side. Because I've had people, several people who have boats who have been anchored in the bay. Who've had people who've come down from Fire Hole or or places like that, who've wondered where they can get gas. And they can't get gas on this side of the lake unless they go to Lucerne. And and obviously, you know, that's something that I would believe that if you were going to issue a permit for a marina, that it would be required within that permit. Is is that something that is required or that you would require within that permit? Or how how would that be addressed?
Well, I, yeah, I I don't know that I would consider it as a uh quote unquote requirement. But it is a service that they uh were providing previously, and it is a service that in talking to the ownership, they would like to. Provide. There was some issues with the existing fuel lines that were leaking and causing issues with the EPA. And so some of those issues, to address those issues, removing the the fuel. From the shore was his only solution. And then he ran out of funding to create some new. Um, additional uses there. I do know that um if people come up and talk to them at the marina, they are willing to. Fill up jerry cans. They're at their, they do have one fueling station in the back maintenance area where, you know, they've taken fuel out to people. Um, and and done it that way. I've, I've been talking with them on finding ways to resolve that issue, but it's, you know, it's one that. Um, it's not an easy fix because of the cost and and how you get it done with the EPA. But I do know that he does want to get it out there for the public. He just hasn't been able to accomplish it as of yet.
That would certainly make sense.
Mister Chairman.
Mister Richards.
Water levels and services aside, this in this area, that that's part of the proposed amendment. Is a very popular area for dispersed camping and and very clearly that would eliminate dispersed camping. In the area, so that that's probably one of the biggest concerns I've heard from constituents. And I heard you mention that you can't camp within a quarter mile of developed areas. If the plan is to develop this next, what is it, a half a mile, three quarter of a mile shoreline? We're pushing dispersed camping even farther up the beach where there probably isn't as good an access as this area. So how do we address the concerns of the public who who have historically been able to camp there?
Thank you, Commissioner. So with Buckboard Marina is the only unique place that this really applies to on the NRA. So as a national special order within quarter mile of a camping, I think everybody in this room would agree that public access. And bringing your family out to the gorge is an amazing thing. So typically. Yes, it's within that, within that quarter mile, but after having discussions with with Brian. You know, Forest Service Road Eight is the main vein down into South Buckboard, and initially the the boundary would be that road. So the existing, the existing marker that is on there still falls within that quarter mile. However, anything to the right of that road would still be open to dispersed camping only because of. One, I I, public access to me is paramount. I don't believe in closing a specific area. Unless we have just cause to do so, whether it's public health and safety or road improvement. Um. So these discussions have been happening over the past six months of what my intent would be as far as dispersed camping. Because it, like I said, is it's only a unique spot on Flaming Gorge. That's that close to a dispersed area with pu- with the access along the shoreline. So with that in mind, my intentions were with the road being the boundary, anything outside of that boundary. To the south of that roadway would still be open to the public.
And. I guess what part of? Since we can't see the permit, what what part of the? The permit protects that, what what keeps the permittee from taking that pink line and putting a fence around the whole thing and closing the public's access off?
So underneath, underneath that permit, we're we're talking about what's constitutional, what isn't, right? So we're talking about. Access to public lands, so just because that this is in green. Does not mean that public cannot access it. It's strictly meaning if that's, say, if this area in the green was to be a developed campground. To have developed sites there, it still wouldn't diminish the public access for it because we already have day use as it is to to begin with, let's say Anvil Draw. Um, Greendale Park, a lot of these places are designated as day use regardless. So it'd still be there from the hours of six AM to ten PM, but regardless if you're going to be over there overnight, it'd be designated as a camping spot. So it wouldn't, so if you wanted to take your family down and fish from the cove for that day, it still wouldn't. It wouldn't restrict the public from going down there and doing so. Does that make sense?
Does, I I'm not sure it'll leave it, makes me feel any better.
So what, al- ultimately, it's not going to restrict any member of the public from accessing it. Regardless if they're on a permit or not, you you can't publicly trespass somebody off of public lands. Unless we actually have an active case that a judge actually restricts that person from from a sentencing. So I'm, I'm not there to trespass public. Uh, that's not, not my purview and I don't ever intend to do that.
Um, and it and it also seems to me that. To solve a problem, you you do the minimum possible. Why was this drawn to include the entire entire bay? And give them control of the entire bay versus. Half the bay, part with the ramp, et cetera.
Yeah, Jason, go ahead. You can answer that.
Um, I I'm not sure if I got dropped or not, but um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, so I I think part of that question, I can address with what Logan was saying. I mean, we've already had discussions with. The, you know, the permit holder out there, so these new areas, should they get authorized and should we decide to? Permit them, it'll be written into the decision that they won't be fenced off. These areas are still access uh areas both for the public and there's two grazing allotments that would be impacted by. Uh, both of these changes, and so part of that agreement that we would have is to. Keep that area under control to where, you know, there's still free public access going in. There's access for the cows. That range those allotments and areas. Um, and then that section that goes beyond the, in the green that goes kind of up to the point, the primary reason for that is. At some point, if if waters were to continue to drop, an attenuator is going to have to be added to help prevent wave. Uh, actions, and so that point would be an anchoring point to put in an attenuator. And and then his desire is to provide some uh like a swim beach area for public access and then. Create some kind of group site style camping areas in that side so that there'd still be access to camping. There'd still be access to the reservoir and to the lake. Um, a- and then if we had to shift over to the deeper end because of shallow water. Then we'd have the ability to slide with the water a- and then adjust as as the water rises and falls. So. Um, does that answer your question?
I think so.
Any other comments, questions, commissioners? It's a shame what the effects of a drought can have and how deep it. Well, I shouldn't say deep, I guess how shallow it can come. I can see both sides, but I I think, you know, the. I can see both sides, but I I think, you know, the bigger issue, like I already mentioned, is just public access and making sure that the marina stays a marina. And I I don't know, I it feels a little bit like a time crunch. I think, you know, we could probably answer some of these questions if we did have that permit. But obviously, if we got to go through the FOIA request, then, you know, that that limits us. I don't know if they'll extend that or how long they're going to extend that, like you mentioned, but.
We're also in the public scoping phase, so the concerns that you had, we could look at those and respond back to you as well. So we're still trying to figure out some of it. A lot of good comments have come up that have caused us to go back to the drawing board a little bit, too. So we're hoping that we can keep the marina a marina, but but also do the best we can to provide rec opportunities for the Wyoming rec users, you know, so.
Any other thoughts or comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I just think both of those things are key in in what we're trying to protect also. So I I think we're we're trying to do the same thing. We're just hearing some different comments and and that's the reason that we're having these this dialogue right now to try and make sure that we're all on the same page and and that we do facilitate that.
Mr. Chairman, I I guess the only other comment I would have i- is when when you mentioned that that you need to to keep your people out of there at night because of uh threats, bad actors, and and that some of this solves that on the behalf of the of the permittee. And I've heard I've heard complaints that that they're butting heads with the with the people that are using the areas around them. I guess I guess I'm concerned with the concept that when we have bad actors, that we solve it by by perceptionally locking somebody else out. Um, we're seeing that across the country. We're seeing that on a lot of federal lands across the country, or we've had people abuse the lands. So they just close it off. A- and that creates maybe the perception that that's the goal here. Because I I think there isn't as much readable information in this application. I know I read the webpage that was dedicated to it, and it's in a lot of legalese. And and we've had you here trying to answer our questions, and I and I guarantee it's still very confusing. So I want assurance that that's not the goal, to solve the problem of the bad actors by locking everybody else out.
So to address that point, Commissioner, so the gorge is seen in share of bad personnel that are attacking there. It's never, it's never the responsibility of myself to try to inhibit the rest of the public from taking that. When he says removing personnel after after a certain hour, that has happened several times with our forest protection officers that we have, our seasonal staff, that I do have a standing order not to go in after dark because we've had some high-risk incidents uh down at the South Buckboard. But that could be said for the entire Ashley. It just happens when getting the dog days of summer, South Buckboard becomes an issue for some reason. I I can't tell you why. We pull tens of thousands dollars of fireworks out there over a period of a weekend. And alcohol definitely simulates that situation as well. Has regardless of whether this is approved or this is not, when I, when you say quiet hours typically are just uh developed campsites do have administrative quiet hours. Right? So if you're paying for a service, you're paying, you're also paying for your solace at the end of the evening, which is why we also have dispersed camping. So under they would not be able to put a closure in here. Every special order that I've ever written goes through the Office of General Counsel. And they always have a termination date. And those terminations are provided by what, like I said, public health and safety, or say, the road needs to be repaired with a grader because of our winter we had. It's carved out already. So the rest of the public, just because this becomes a developed campground, it doesn't mean that they can't camp there, but they're also paying for the additional services that this pro- possibly would provide. So dispersed camping, we already have state limits that are in place. We have to to prevent people from using public lands for residential purposes without a permit. So this is a a big issue all across national forests right now for residential camping. And this is happening as we speak now in UWC with current current cases going to trial. So I don't know what else to do to other than assure you that I've never removed somebody off of public lands based on the permittees want without having significant reason and or a violation of federal law to do so. So my job is very, very clear. I I would, I do not move people just because they're they're offended. This is our, that's their right to use our public lands. We are the land of many uses. So and I want to keep it that way. So I um regardless of this gets in, the permittee can't just simply remove somebody. It's, this is the conversation I've had with the Sweetwater County Sheriff's Department. We could, we go in that area a lot together over the field season due to some of those issues. But trespassing is not a viable option unless that situation would deem that it's a public health and safety threat to those around them. Other than that, there will be no closure order to the public.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other questions, comments, commissioners?
Well, I I would still comment, it looks like it's taken up a lot of the shoreline. I know you want to give them their acreage, but could you go up along that road and along their boundary and then follow that road down and take in that corner of the cove without taking in the whole area going north?
Yeah, so the reasons why we selected those areas were one for him to be able to put docks in deeper water. And that's other other way, if he needs to put something in to protect the infrastructure from the waves, if it got to those wa- low water levels, that was the the purpose for that.
But it seems like it's going a long ways along the shore.
Yeah.
Beyond that cove.
That's what he, I believe it was Jason was clarifying that they could then have an anchor point for an attenuator if they needed one in future. So that's why that's out there. But.
Well, I'd like to thank you all for being here to help us resolve this. And and it's a good step in the right direction for us to to be able to work in in the public's interest to work with this. And and once again, thank you.
We appreciate your time and comments and concerns and thank you.
A lot easier if it would just snow more, but we're tired of the damn snow, too. So. We appreciate you being here today and helping answer some of these questions and taking the time to sit here all day waiting for your turn and we'll continue to chip away. Let us know if that does get extended past Friday. Um, you know, obviously, we're trying to keep our eye on it closely so we can try and protect the constituents' best interest.
Make sure you get your concerns and comments in there so that we can do our best to address the address those issues. So thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Appreciate it. We've got cards over here on the wall, too, if you guys. Any other follow-up conversation to that, commissioners? And we are up against potentially a tight timeline with Friday. Sounds like that could or may get extended, but I think that helps address a lot of the questions and concerns, but maybe not all of them, however. Without knowing the infinite details of what's required and what's not in that permit, it makes it kind of difficult to.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think uh I was going to ask John Delion, I think we should do a FOIA.
I would agree.
And as a governmental agency, it looks like they should have consulted with us a little bit before they went ahead with all this.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Chairman, I we're we're supposed to be a partner agency, and I and I feel like we we should have been apprised of this a little farther ahead of time. I think a FOIA and asking John to do a FOIA would be would be appropriate.
So I kind of wonder if, you know, maybe without knowing if they are going to extend it, perhaps we should draft a letter explaining, you know, a lot of the concerns that we shared today that we'd like, you know, additional time to gather, you know, a FOIA request for the permitting aspect to try and have, I guess, a stronger voice before we just take a position on a lunch, on a lot of unknowns. And, you know, maybe that's something we can draft with Eric's help. I hate to volunteer him for additional work, but.
Well, I Mr. Chair, I I think the draft letter he had was anticipation of maybe some negative comments, but I I feel like what we're talking about is 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 a request to extend the comment, period. Give us a chance to to FOIA the the permit so we can, we can look and see if we feel like it's being observed.
Mr. Chairman, I still believe it would be appropriate for us to send a letter at this point in time, you know, with our concerns. Um, and and once again, I'm scared to death with this deadline of the twenty-first. Yes, we're being told that that's probably going to be extended, but I from the output, outpouring from the public, I think this is something we need to address. I think we need to send a letter with the concerns that we have been discussing today. And that's what I would like to see us move forward with.
Yeah, so that's kind of what I was getting at. And with that, include the FOIA request, we're just explaining that we're, you know, going that route so that we would appreciate additional time for input. Is everyone in agreement on that?
Do you agree with that?
Yeah, I think I think it sounds like you're making a motion to approve communication, including a FOIA request.
So moved. So yeah, then also, you know, to draft a letter to the Ashley National Forest explaining the situation and that we would appreciate an additional extension of the timeline. Sounds like we got a motion by Commissioner Slaughter. I believe I heard a second by Commissioner Richards. Any further discussion? Hang on, all of the favors signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay? It's unanimous.
Got that, Eric?
Mr. Chairman, I'll try to get that in an email and circulate it. And if any comments, just let me know. All right.
Thanks, Eric. Appreciate it. All right, we fell behind a little bit, but very important topic that I'm glad they were able to come uh discuss with us.
Such a cool question for Sally. Does that note section have a limited amount of space because I did it again and wiped out all my notes? Well, I'll talk to you later.
We'll have to get with our IT liaison to solve that, Commissioner. Next up, we do have under tab D, item number nineteen. We've got Southwest Counseling Service update on the ARPA capital projects. With us today is Linda Aker, the CEO, and Melissa Ray Marquetti, the CFO. Good afternoon, ladies. We're about ten minutes behind, but it's been worse in the past, so.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name's Linda Aker, and I'm the CEO of Southwest Counseling, and I have.
There you go. There you go. I'm getting waved out from the corner, so.
I'm not very tall, unfortunately. And I have Melissa Ray Marquetti, who's our CFO of Southwest Counseling. And the reason I'm here is because you own all of Southwest Counseling's building, the county does. And we occupy several of them. Last year, can you hear me if I turn this way or not? Can you hear me?
But it's the people on the line.
Okay, so you want me to, I don't want you guys to think I'm not looking at you. Anyway, last year became apparent that at the state level that Southwest Counseling as a community mental health and substance abuse center was going to have the opportunity for capital construction. Now, capital construction is unheard of in our contracts with the state of Wyoming. In fact, it's totally restricted that we can use any of their money until it loses its identity for capital construction. And so last year, they kept talking about seven million dollars becoming available only for the community mental health centers. And I had informed the board throughout twenty-two that this was happening. Well, in May, it became available through the SLIB grants. And the seven million dollars was specifically to the mental health. It had to be for crisis stabilization and substance disorders for women in treatment, residential treatment. And so at that time, there's many buildings of South Southwest Counseling that needs capital construction. I would say all of them because they're old and they're aging daily. And with the pandemic, we had to move our treatment services into the facility. So it really was difficult on the buildings. But I chose four projects. Duran and Washeki are residential facilities, and they house women in treatment with their children, only one house, not both houses. And the other two projects were Ankeny and uh Jonah, the Jonah project. So there was four projects altogether. The entire total project request to the board was four point two million. So you can imagine Southwest Counseling could not do that type type of capital construction. In December, I went before the SLIB board. They accepted three of the four proposals, Washeki, Duran, and Ankeny. They denied the Jonah Field. Um, I call it the Jonah Field. It's the Jonah Project because they considered it a modular building, which it is. It's a manufactured building. And they tabled that till January of this year. When I went before them in January, I gave them the documentation about how the building looked on the outside because a previous commission had asked that we made sure that that building, when it was placed on a foundation, would not look like a modular building. And it doesn't. It's stuccoed. It has nice rock around it. It's it's very well. It's very well maintained and looked at from the outside. So that project was denied in January because uh one of the SLIB board members felt like it was a mothball project. And they wanted to know why we just didn't do a stick-built project. Well, I didn't have a stick building project ready to go. But the great news now is April seventh, I went before the SLIB board, and they approved the Jonah project. So it's a total of requests of four point two million from these four projects. I did not come before the county commissioner asking permission to apply for the grant. I apologize if I was supposed to do that. I did not realize that. Um, and maybe that needs to be clarified. I did go ahead, and the board has signed the SLIB agreements. But no capital construction has been done to the buildings, none. So we did, we do have the money for the match, and I did not come before the Board of County Commissioners for the match, which is eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. So want to inform this board, uh, the county owns all the buildings. We would do nothing. And I think really Southwest Counseling's been great stewards of all those buildings and have kept them up to date with maintenance. And we have maintenance issues every day. But in our SLIB applications, it would be important to know there's not only capital capital uh construction, there's just day-to-day maintenance. Well, day-to-day. Uh, the roof, uh, ceiling tiles needing to be replaced, flooring needing to be replaced, painting, patches of the the wall. So there, that's also included in what we consider the capital projects. Yeah, if you have any questions, and if you could help clarify if I need to come before you for grant applications, that would be positive for me to know this, uh, because I told Melissa, I don't know if I should be uh asking for forgiveness or saying I'm sorry for something I did that I didn't know I was doing.
Thanks, Linda. Appreciate you coming. A lot of this stemmed from their last board meeting, which I kind of informed you guys on last meeting was just wanting to kind of get on the same page when it comes to some of these capital improvements because it is county-owned property. The response or the the understanding on their part was just that there wasn't a match on the county's part, and so they didn't feel it was necessary. So that's the reason they've come today to kind of present that and inform you all, rather than me trying to remember everything. Their last meeting was two and a half hours. It feels kind of like today where after a while, you're a little rummy, but I think it's a great thing, and it's a proactive approach. So, you know, they've been able to go after and secure that funding. But as a component unit of the county, I think it's important that you know, we are informed and we do agree to that, you know, the hospital is going to be coming to us next meeting. Um, similar situation where they were awarded some grant funding that does not require a county match. Um, they're coming, you know, just out of a good gesture, communication. The airport this morning, you know, a little different. They're not a component unit, but they're a joint powers board. Um, we had to sign off on, you know, a grant request for them, even though there's no match from our end. So I just think especially on the capital construction, it's important that, you know, we're all in a loop on what's going on. I treat the relationship different, but in simplistic terms, you know, I kind of view it as if I have a rental property, I I don't want my tenant, you know, making modifications to my home without me being in the loop. And obviously, I think the relationship's more important than that. But in simplistic terms, I think it's just a common courtesy that, you know, we we know what's going on with the facilities. We can help. I know you've been in conversations with Gene and um, I believe Christine and Marty and some of the others. So the assistance is there, but we just want to make sure that, you know, we don't get stuck with a situation of, you know, a contractor defaults on the bid or the project, and we end up in lawsuits or whatever the case is, as well as just making sure that, you know, all of our needs or requests or, you know, goals or visions, I guess, are all on the same page with trying to do what's best for the community. I know that's, you know, close to heart for you all, but. Needs or requests or, you know, goals or visions, I guess, are all on the same page with trying to do what's best for the community. I know that's, you know, close to heart for you all, but. Just kind of wanted to get that out there and see if the, the other commissioners had any thoughts on that because I think it's important to. Realize the relationship and. Create a clearer understanding in the future. I know you've came, you know, in past meetings I've seen, you know, this has been the case where you presented or asked. You know, for permission to go after grant funding or whatever the case is, so. Commissioner Shanefield?
Thank you. I, I agree with our chairman, just in that if we have people asking questions as well, that we can help support your organization. There's often times that I get questions from the SLIV board members and they want to know what's going on in Sweetwater County. And. If I, if I don't have an answer, it makes it look like we're out of the loop and I don't like that feeling. So I, I really think that that's important. I also think that just for the. The taxpayers visibility too of, you know, where money is going, where investment is going so that they know that that wasn't county money put into that. That you guys had saved, you know, for the match money that you received, federal funds, you know, that we're all working together to build that. I think that's just important transparency. For the public to understand, be able to go back and track and, you know, the meetings that we have. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman.
Christian Richards.
Linda, thanks for coming. Appreciate, appreciate you being here. Can you maybe just break down a little bit of. What your capital projects look like and what, what that money's going to be spent on? I, I know it's not going to all be paint jobs.
No, for Duran and Washeki, which are the residential homes for the substance disordered individuals, those are. The majority comes from bathroom remodels and for the kitchens being totally remodeled. We need to upgrade to a commercial type. Facility because of the usages twenty-four seven. And there are windows being replaced, siding being replaced. Roofing being replaced. At Ankeny, it is similar that we want to update the bathrooms. We want to do, Melissa's pulling everything out for me. I want to install new flooring throughout, remove the sliding and install stucco so it matches the Jonah building. The concrete around Ankeny is crumbling and needs to be replaced. And then we want to do a re-roof if possible. It's a flat roof. Facility and it's constantly leaking. So we'd like the roof to be looked at to see if we couldn't do something different there. And then we have requests for like external security lighting cameras. And we want cameras within the building in common areas. So those are, and the Jonah building, which is. Our last facility and it was the modular that came from the Jonah field, from Jonah Energy. And we were contacted by Commissioner West in two thousand fourteen. To see if we were interested in a modular building. And of course, we knew we couldn't build a building. And we were, I think, the only ones in the county at that time that were interested. And it took us till two thousand twenty to. Get the, it on a foundation and the, the work around it done. But now all that of the interior is going to have to be completed. And that's mostly, we're looking at removing a beam from the. Interior, if it's possible, it may not be. We're also looking at redoing the flooring, removing all the ceiling tiles and replacement. Melissa's so good to me. And once again, oh, there's a big one on that. We need that parking lot to have asphalt and parking lot, lights. And security cameras on the outside of the building as well as the inside of the building. So there's a lot to be done. I don't know if our dollars are going to cover. What we have put into the SLIV board because inflation is hitting everything that we're doing right now. But they did say at the last SLIV board meeting, there will be a five million dollar contingency for. Inflation. So, and once we get the architect, the architect has to draft everything. And get the bids for the county. Once that's done and it goes out, I will come back to the county commissioners to let you know the cost.
Mr. Chairman.
Christian Slaughter.
I too would like to thank you, Linda, for coming before us today and telling us about this and commend you. For, for being proactive and going out and getting these funds. It's obviously in our best interest to have our buildings in much better shape. But I agree with the chair. I think it's important that we as commissioners have the knowledge of what's going on with those. So I think it is appropriate in the future, you know, if, if you're going to seek those types of awards, that, that the, the Board of County Commissioners is a part of that. And, and at least has the fundamental understanding of what's going on with that. So, once again, sounds great. And I think there'll be some great changes, but thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, Commissioners? Linda, Melissa, we appreciate your time and for coming over today in this lovely spring weather. That hopefully goes away. I will look forward to hearing more about this. Four point two million dollar investment into some of the facilities and helping me along the way, so.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, I think it only snowed while the feds were here.
Thank you both.
It's a good thing Gene wasn't here during that time then, if that's the game.
With that, we're right back on track. I'm giving my minute to get her some extra time. She's been yelling at me that I'm going too fast today, so. Uh, we do have, looks like Rick Thompson's online. We've got Irene Richardson, CEO of the hospital here. Our next item under tab D is. Item twenty-one, the resolution twenty-three oh four C C oh four. For the adoption conversion of series two thousand twenty-one revenue bonds to tax exempt bonds. Is Rick going to lead Irene or?
I'll be happy to if you'd like me to.
Hi, Rick. How are you?
Good morning, or excuse me, good afternoon. Chairman West, members of the commission, I'm Rick Thompson with Hathaway and Coons in Cheyenne. We serve as bond counsel to the hospital. And the issuance of their revenue bonds. The matter that's before you is a resolution to authorize. Reissuance of hospital revenue bonds that we issued in two thousand twenty-one. Let me give you just a brief background. In two thousand thirteen, the hospital issued revenue bonds to finance construction of improvements to the hospital. In two thousand twenty-one, when we were enjoying some near record low interest rates. The decision was made by the hospital to refinance those bonds to a lower interest rate. Unfortunately, the bonds were not callable at that time. The, the first call date is September one of this year. So we couldn't do an advance refunding that would be tax exempt because of a law change in two thousand seventeen. That provided that, uh, advanced refundings could not be done on a tax exempt basis. So what we did. With guidance from Piper Sandler or the municipal advisor, we created convertible bonds that were issued. Issually as taxable bonds, so we could get them issued and take advantage of the low interest rates. But make the bonds convertible to tax exempt when the bonds become callable. You can call bonds up to ninety days in advance of their call date and still be considered a current refunding. So you can do that on a tax exempt basis. That date is June fifth. So that's the earliest we can convert these bonds. And we want to do that because. When we convert these bonds from taxable to tax exempt, that the rate will drop from three point one eight six percent. To a rate of two point five one seven percent. In hindsight, the hospital's timing was impeccable. I understand that from talking to the municipal advisors that. Bonds similar to this going out in the market now would be looking at a rate, something double of what the, the rate we got in these. And it's a, it's a fixed rate. So we, we were able to lock those rates in and we will get that rate when we convert these bonds. John wanted me to make the point to you that, to rest assured that these are not general obligation bonds of the county. These are hospital revenue bonds that are payable solely from net revenues of the hospital. So, uh, last, or maybe it's week before last, the hospital board passed a resolution. Authorizing the reissuance of the bond and requesting the county as the issuer. In Wyoming, when you have a county memorial hospital. The county serves as the issuer, even though it's the county, it's the hospital's revenues that, that serve as the financing mechanism for the bonds. But the county serves as the issuer. So the hospital board has requested that the county authorize. The reissuance of these bonds. And with this resolution adopted, we can then move forward. To complete the preparation of all the documents necessary to close the reissuance of the bonds by June fifth. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Okay. That was Nate Eckloff, our advisor from Piper Sandler, who is on the call in case we have questions for him. He's. Getting ready to board an airplane, so he wasn't able to join with video.
Okay. One question I had, Rick, and I don't know how long you've been handling the hospital's bonds, but I know. Several years ago, I can't remember off the top of my head, I was a young gun back then, but it seems like around two thousand five, two thousand six, somewhere in there. County had a specific purpose tags that went towards a pretty significant expansion at the hospital. And the monies that were included on that towards the hospital's portion weren't enough. And so they came before the county commission. Wanting to. Go after, I guess, additional bonds to help fund that project. And so they issued one back then. And then throughout that project, there were. Cost overruns, I believe they referred to as, I think it's the two thousand A and two thousand B bonds. Somewhere around the same twenty-six million as I can gather. And so then I believe those were both converted into two thousand and thirteen. Bond that you're referencing, if I'm on the same page here, that, that's referenced in this resolution. Then that two thousand thirteen became this two thousand twenty-one, I assume. Is it, is that the same bond that we're talking about?
That is the same bond. Your recollection is consistent with mine. I did not serve as bond counsel in two thousand six when they originally issued. Or in two thousand thirteen, we became bond counsel in two thousand twenty-one. But having read everything. What you just described is accurate with my understanding that the first financing occurred in two thousand six. Those were refunded in two thousand thirteen. I think some additional improvements were done in two thousand thirteen that added to the obligation. And that's what's been refunded.
And so I guess on that note, if, if I understand it correctly, those were. Bonds that had no capital payment or no principal payment rather, it was interest only. And so. I don't know if this question is proper for you or maybe for Irene, but I'm curious why we're not paying down that principal and we're just continuing to reissue these. Bonds every so couple of years.
So there were two different series of bonds issued back then, and one of them has been paid off. There was a series A and a series B. One of the series, and I get them confused which one it was, has been completely paid off. And so we are down to the other series. And it was primarily during those early years, interest only. There's been some principal reduction since then. But the total obligation has been significantly reduced since they were first taken out in twenty, two thousand six and two thousand thirteen.
Okay, so I guess those, the A and B weren't combined then to make the thirteen. A was paid off and B became thirteen, is that right?
I think so.
Along those lines?
Yeah, there were two, KeyBank bought one of the series and the other one was sold publicly. The publicly sold bonds. Were paid off. The KeyBank bonds have been refinanced and, and Key Finance is the purchaser of these bonds as well.
Okay. So with this reissuance. I don't know who I should be asking here, Irene. Maybe you might be best. I hate to put you on the spot, but that's why you're here today. So. Are, are you guys paying principal down on this?
We are. We, we started paying principal and, and obviously that's our intent is to get that paid down. So these are like, and help me, Rick, this is kind of, uh, just to, to make them from taxable. Bonds to tax exempt. So, so not really, I guess, a reissuance, more of a just changing the, the interest rate. But, um. But yes, our intent is to pay down the principal and, and that's what we'd like to do.
Okay. I just knew there was a period of time there where it was just interest only and it just seemed like. Didn't make much sense to continue not to pay down that principal amount. So I wasn't sure what was happening there. And that's my question. When I saw this reissuance. I'm like, man, I remember that from years ago. So it seems crazy to think, you know, almost twenty years later, we're still talking about reissuing and reissuing. And so. I just wanted some clarification on that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Thanks, Irene.
Hey, Rick, this is Nate Eckloff from Piper Sandler. I was going to say, uh, you know, obviously the hospital paying down principal, but then. Obviously with its conversion to lower interest rate, it, it reduces the annual debt service payments even more. So, uh, it really helps for the cash flow basis.
I think I caught that, not. Yeah.
If I may, just to add to what Irene said, it's called a reissuance for federal tax law purposes, but really we're doing nothing more than. Lowering the interest rate on the bonds that are, were already outstanding. We're not adding any principal obligation of what's already outstanding. There has been some pay down since we issued and pay down the principal since in two thousand one, and that will continue each year through these, throughout these bonds.
Sure. Is this interest rate locked in? Is it variable? Do you know? I mean, I think you told me it went from three one eight six to two five one seven.
It's fixed. It's fixed through the term of the bonds till two thousand thirty-six is the maturity date. So it gets locked. It's a, it's a great rate.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Christian Slaughter.
Just for perspective, when, when this issue came before the hospital board, as their liaison, I was there. And one of the questions that I had was for Irene and their CFO, Tammy Love. And I asked what the net. Effect of this was going to have. And over the life of this issue, it's going to save four point one million dollars. Just having that interest rate decreased from the level that it was at to the two, and I, I'm showing on their bond debt service schedule that it's two point six four or five percent. Is what it would be now. But that, that gives some perspective as to what this is actually accomplishing in doing this.
So you think it'll be paid off by then?
Two thousand thirty-seven.
If we can do it sooner, we will.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Now that I took up all the time. I did catch one typo in that resolution. In our packet, it's on page three. It's that largest paragraph where it's talking about. What they're doing with the second supplements and blah blah. At the very end, it's supposed to be twenty-six million, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand. There should be three zeros. There's only one. So it makes it look like it's two point six million, which would be nice. But it's just something I thought I'd point out and. We might want to.
We'll get that fixed and substitute that page out. Sorry about, sorry about that.
Any other questions or comments, Commissioners? Hearing none, what is your pleasure on resolution twenty-three oh four C C oh four?
I have C C oh one, Mr. Chairman.
It's a typo.
Is it oh four?
Should be oh four.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We've got a motion to approve resolution twenty-three oh four C C oh four, the adoption. Conversion of series two thousand twenty-one revenue bonds to tax exempt, tax exempt bombs, bonds, goodness. For Memorial Hospital, Sweetwater County. We have a second. Second by Commissioner Richards. Any further discussion? Hang on, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion's unanimous. Thanks Irene. Thanks, Rick, and I believe Nate, if I heard it right.
Yep, you got it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Commissioners, we're chipping away here. Item number twenty-two, ratification of the CLG comments on the RMP's rate increase application. Commissioner Toman.
On behalf of this county, the Coalition Local Government's Attorney Danielle Betancourt researched and prepared comments. To go to the Public Service Commission regarding Rocky Mountain Powers rate increase. I would make a motion to accept those comments, to ratify those comments.
Second.
I thought it was very well written, by the way. We do have a motion to ratify the comments by Commissioner Toman, second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay. Motion's unanimous. The last item, commissioners, is ratification of a letter of support to the City Rock Springs for their community project funding request. As you all know, I sent you an email on that. Uh, we're just officially approving that. As listed in your packet, there's not any questions. I would entertain a motion to ratify.
Some of.
Motion by Commissioner Shanefeld. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay. Motion's unanimous. And the last item, as amended, we do need to enter into an executive session to discuss a legal issue. I'm not sure if action will be taken upon coming out, but we will address it accordingly. So I'd entertain a motion, enter into the executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefeld. All in favor, say aye.
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 Close nay. We are now in executive.